Meeting to order and we'll do roll call. Um, Sue?
Sue Rapley Marlborough.
Scott?
Scott Flair Marlborough. Did that, did that not come through?
Uh, Scott, I heard you. Yes.
Okay.
And then Vinny?
Vin Colonna Hebron.
Judy? Judy, are you on? We'll come back. Kathleen?
Kathleen Goodwin Hebron.
Lori?
Lori Blake Andover.
Rob?
Rob Shadow Hebron.
Stephanie Bancroft from Andover. And Judy, did you, are you still on? For roll call? We're not here.
I'll text her for you. I'll text her for you.
Okay.
See if you can get her.
Thank you. Is there any other board member that I did not see that's online? Yes.
You can hear me now.
Oh, yes, I can hear you, Judy. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did Jean make it tonight? No, Jean? Um, did Joe make it tonight? No, Joe? Okay, and I know Jessica will be joining us in a few minutes, so. Is there anyone else I missed? Are the student representatives here tonight?
No, I don't see, I don't see Dana. That she's logged on.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are they, are they getting the invite for the meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so hopefully if, Scott, if you see a board member pop in like Jessica, let me know if I miss it, so.
Will do.
Sure will.
All right, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next is public comments. Hebron Andover Marlborough Committee Engagement and the attendance at Board of Ed Public Meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Ed may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Ed is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Ed is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Would someone mind being a timekeeper?
I don't mind, Steph.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Are there any public comments? Okay, I'm not hearing or seeing any. Okay. All right, we'll be moving on. Add/Delete Agenda Items. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? I'm not hearing any. So we will move on. Our student representatives are not here still?
That is correct.
Okay, so we will move on from student rep reports. And the Board of Ed Chair Report. I'd like to thank Scott, Leslie, the Administration, and the Reentry Committee, as well as many teachers working on the Disastering Committee. I don't want to overlook the Facilities Department bookkeeping and school counselors who have had to overcome many obstacles additions to their workload over the summer. The Board will be discussing on Wednesday how we can safely return to in-person monthly meetings with options for those who cannot attend or feel it's not safe for themselves or others. We will welcome everyone back for the year and look forward to hopefully a healthy new year. So, thank you, everyone who worked so hard over the summer and looking forward to another school year. So Happy New Year. All right, number seven, reported to Superintendent.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everybody virtual. Certainly will be nice to see everybody in person eventually as well. I have a few updates. I know one I included in my Friday update for the Board. This past week, myself and Sidney Farrar, the class president, I'm just admitting Jessica Dapsis. Last week, Sidney Farrar and myself joined the Lions for their, actually, they were doing an induction ceremony at the fair. Sidney was the class president for the class of 2020 and the class of 2020 had voted to provide the Lions with a donation of $5,000 in gratitude for allowing Ram to use the Lions Fairgrounds for our graduation last year. That was a surprise donation to most of the Lions and I can tell you they were thrilled. So it was really a nice evening. And the Lions gratitude doesn't end there. We will be borrowing their picnic tables and benches as well. So we'll be using about 100 picnic tables and 80-something benches to create outside classrooms around the middle and high schools. Students will be able to work outside when we return to school in a couple of weeks. We did receive notification from the state of the coronavirus relief funds. You may remember in an earlier meeting, we talked about how the state had asked each district to complete a survey indicating the funds necessary. At the time, it was originally to return to a full reopening and we had submitted costs of $1,070,000 and that included included cleaning supplies, included things like Plexiglas shields, it included additional staff to monitor the movement of students throughout the building. We asked for $1,070,000 and we received $33,000, I'm sorry, $37,485. And specifically, the $37,000 we received specifically for cleaning, PPE, health, and safety. The monies that we would have loved to receive for additional personnel this year unfortunately were designated only for districts that had 40% or more free and reduced lunch students. So we didn't qualify for those. But so we did, we did receive $37,000 to support the purchase of PPE cleaning supplies and health and safety supplies. I know that you have at least heard something regarding the return of high school athletics and the challenge that has developed as a result of some of the communication possibly between CIC and the Department of Health. I met with the the Executive Director for CIC earlier today and where we are right now at this moment, and I can promise you this will change before the end of the week. But where we are right now is the CIC and the Department of Health have agreed that students can begin conditioning once again today. You may remember that conditioning was postponed till next Monday. Students are back to conditioning in small numbers, groups of up to 10. Students will be able to begin skill work on Saturday. CIC is still working for a final decision regarding football and volleyball. So they are meeting once again with DPH on the status of football and volleyball. I think one of the decisions coming out of CIC is that if volleyball and football do not happen in the fall, then they likely will not happen at all. Some of us had advocated for a possible late winter, spring season for either one or both sports, but the decision was not to pursue that should they not happen this fall. The Department of Health is working with Danbury and the CIC. You know, there's a spike in cases in Danbury, so they're looking at what the implications of that might be for high school sports. The CIC is looking to formalize the start date for most schools because one of the things the CIC had, or the DPH had asked is that they wait two weeks from the start of school before we start formal practices. So Glenn Lungarini, the Executive Director, is going to be reaching out to us and, you know, I think most of us were starting Labor Day, so it's going to be a couple of weeks from there. That'll probably be the case. You know, bottom line is the most important decisions regarding volleyball and football will be made this week and we will know more at this point in time. We simply don't have an answer to that. We do begin the return to folks in the building this week. On Wednesday and Thursday, we'll be welcoming our new teachers. We have 11 new staff members who will be joining us Wednesday and Thursday for our new teacher orientation. That will be facilitated by myself, the building administrators, the accounting department, and our department coordinators. And then on Monday, August 31st, we'll be welcoming all of our staff back for the week of August 31st through September 4th for a full week of professional development. We will have the vast majority of our staff in the building, although they'll also be working remotely from their classrooms. So teachers will have lots of options in terms of how they connect, reconnect with each other when we return. And then students will be returning on Tuesday, September 8th.
Judy, would you mind muting your phone?
Oh, no, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
We're going to, Scott, are you all set?
I am, yes, thanks.
Okay. Going on to the consent agenda, number 8.1, approval of minutes. Are there, is there any corrections? Or statements about the minutes? We had 8.1A, 8.1B, and 8.1C.
Make a motion to accept minutes as written.
Okay. Second?
Rob will second.
Okay. And there's no discussion? Okay, person, there are no, let's, well, we'll vote. This is part of the consent agenda, so we'll, we'll attach us on to personnel actions, which there are none. So is there a motion to, to accept consent agenda?
I'll amend the motion to accept consent agenda, Vin.
Okay, thank you, Vin. Second?
I'll still second, Rob.
Okay, any discussion for consent agenda? No? Okay, we'll go down to vote. Sue?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Judy?
I think she hung up stuff accidentally.
Okay. Kathleen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And did Judy make it back on?
I don't see her, Stephanie.
Okay. All right, we do have a majority vote, so we're going to pass the consent agenda. All right, moving on to number nine, old business. Discussion of Board Evaluation Self, Board of Education Self-Evaluation. In the packet, you all got the self-evaluation of the, that we did earlier this year. And I don't know if you had time to look at it, but there's a recommended motion on the table to schedule a board retreat to review and discuss the results of the board self-evaluation. Is there anything you would like to discuss about the Board of, the Board of Ed Self-Evaluation? And would you like to schedule a board retreat?
I would agree with scheduling a retreat to discuss the evaluation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Rob will second.
Any discussion?
Are we like discussing the date now or are we just planning to schedule the meeting and then we'll do the date later?
Um, I think maybe getting a date down later would be, would be good. I know in the past, we've done some Saturday mornings. I could take a poll of the, of the board and see what you want to do. But instead of waste time right now, that would be an easy email out to everybody to, to schedule a meeting. Agreed?
I'm fine with that.
Yes.
No, no topic for discussion.
Okay, so we'll go, any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote for setting a board retreat. Sue?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Did Judy make it back on?
I do not see Judy, no.
Okay, Kathleen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yep.
Rob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, it looks like Judy just joined.
I see that. So Judy, we're voting on, to set a date for the board retreat to discuss the self-evaluation. Judy, did you hear that? Is she still on?
She is still on. See if I can.
I, yeah, I'm unmuted now. Okay.
Stephanie, I'm confused. Did you choose a date or just to set a date?
Just to set a date.
Um, yes, I vote yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well, so the motion passes unanimously. All right, so I'll be looking at dates for that and getting back to everybody.
Excuse me, Scott, can you mute me?
I absolutely can.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, number 10, new business. I believe I turn that over to Eva.
All right, good evening, everyone. So 10.1 we start with is in your packet. These are transfers that the board needs to approve and these are for year-end, for last fiscal year. As you can see, there are five transfers and they total out to $318,186.71. Most of the expense, or the transfers were to cover expenditures for COVID-related expenses and/or moving money back up to unallocated personnel. So for year-end, for covering tutoring costs and paraprofessional time due to extra hours required for, for remote learning. Changes in classification to cover the extra pays. And year-end transfers to cover resignation and additional hours of staff members. And then based in, I believe it was June's board meeting, we talked about needed expenditures. So that was the, the larger entry 84 that covered all of those. Are there any questions in regards to these transfers? So hearing no questions, the board needs to make a motion to either accept or reject the transfers as stated.
Anyone?
I'll make a motion to accept the transfers as stated, Rob.
Kathleen, second.
Is there any discussion? No, okay, I'll go down for a vote. Sue?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Judy? She'll have to be unmuted. Scott, can you unmute Judy so she can vote?
I need to find her again. Here we go. I am not able to unmute. I can mute, but I can't unmute. Judy, can you unmute yourself?
She's left the meeting.
She's left the meeting, yeah.
Okay, Kathleen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So motion passes.
Thank you very much. So now we can go on to enclosure 10.2. And there's actually three portions to 10.2. So the first one actually is the year-end report or the net projection as of June 30th. And this is unaudited data, so it's still raw data. The audit, as you know, can make some adjustments here or there based on transactions that auditors feel that they want to reclassify. So based on everything that I have in, based on everything that I have reviewed, we come out to a net favorable position of $862,959. This takes into account $143,638 in revenue. The majority of that was from excess cost. We received more than anticipated. And then there, because of COVID, we had significant savings realized in personnel purchase services, which includes student transportation as well as tuition placements for both magnet and private placements. So that was the lion's share of everything. We also, as you know, are able to carry forward 1% of the net favorable position, which equates to $304,959. And that can be allocated to capital, non-recurring, and sick or severance. And the remainder of the $800,000, which equates to about $558,000, would be given back to the towns as a credit offset for the 21, 22 budget season. But just note that this still needs to be verified by the auditors, but that would probably be about the area that we're in. The Capital Improvement Fund as of June 30th also realized a savings of $8,539. And again, that also needs to be verified through the audit process, but those are the highlights basically of last year. Are there any questions there?
I just, I had a question. This is Vin.
Okay.
So Eva, the, that takes into account all the adjustments that we made at, at year's end, right? With the, with the transfers? That's 862, none of that is included in that. This is additional monies.
Well, so, correct. So this is everything that's left over, unexpended on the table or we received additional funds in revenue, if I'm speaking on the other side of the books. But yes, so that is everything that was not used up in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, and a question relating to transportation. Since we are not using any buses on Wednesdays, is that going to be a topic of discussion coming up? Or are we seeing any kind of savings from DATCO in terms of adjustments?
So it is, currently we received, so there, unfortunately, I don't even know how to explain this. So in light of the situation, because the driver, all the bus companies are asking for five days a week payment whether or not we're utilizing the bus company transportation because they have their drivers to pay for. The Attorney's Office just sent us an MOU this afternoon so that we can actually start to have some of these discussions because there are some districts, also not just by DATCO, by other transportation vendors that are now getting asked to pay the coverage, additional coverage for cleaning the buses and additional coverage for bus monitors if they're using bus monitors. We would not be using bus monitors. So there are areas in room for negotiation. So we're hoping that, unfortunately, Mr. Leslie and I didn't get a chance to speak about this today, so I'm hoping that sometime tomorrow, we can delve into a little bit more and then we can update the board on, on that topic as we get more information on it.
That, that would be good. And I think maybe another topic of discussion. I know, I know we paid coaches through the spring sports. But I, I think there has to be a discussion going forward. If, if sports continue to be canceled, you know, what's going to happen? You know, with, with the coaches' stipends and what have you.
Yeah, I think, Vinny, on, on that respect, I think we're going to have to, you know, look at those sports, sport by sport, because we do have coaches that have been conditioning with students all along. So, you know, there may be a, a sport that has not had any activity whatsoever, but that would be different than one that may have already done some conditioning and, and already started their season. So there'll be, that'll be a, probably a fairly sophisticated discussion. You know, on the, on the bus thing, I know, you know, Eva kind of alluded to it that our attorneys are really asking us to, you know, let's look at what the best approach will be. You're not going to get everything back in the negotiation. So, you know, is it negotiating, possibly paying for five days and getting savings elsewhere? So that'll be kind of the discussion we move in with our attorneys to decide what puts the district in the best place and is the most reasonable negotiations with the bus company.
Scott, are you hearing anything from the state regarding, you know, Department of Education and, and the whole bus situation? Or is the state kind of just staying out of the whole thing?
I think the, I think it's safe to say the mantra of the state has been local control all the way, whether it be financial or making decisions. And, and I have not heard anything whatsoever about any state involvement in the transportation piece.
Are they, are they subsidized at all? I mean, is, is, do they get any kind of subsidy from the state? Or is it, is it 100% on us, on our contract?
In, in terms of subsidy, what do you mean, Vinny? In, in terms of like, do they get funding from the state themselves?
Correct. You know, to offset the cost or, or is 100% of, of our costs paid by us?
So they're a for-profit company, so I don't believe they get anything from the state or the federal government. So everything's covered by the districts and/or whatever other kind of enterprising solutions they have to make money.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so any more questions on 10.2A, the expenditures and revenues for fiscal year 1920?
I just want to confirm, is it 10.2 or 10.3? I'm pulling it up on my computer.
10.2 is what we were speaking of. Vinny just asked a couple of questions running ahead of the game.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at, but I'm looking on the forms itself that I opened. Maybe it was just labeled wrong. I have 10.3A and it shows financials audited. And then that 10.2 that I have on the computer was about, I think, more students clubs and things like that. I might be.
Oh, well, so there's the 10.2, a 10.2, well, 10.2 has three components, an A, B, and a C. So A has expenditures and revenues and B is what I was going to move to next, which is student activity.
Okay, so I must have missed the first one somewhere. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Is it okay to move forward?
I think so. No more, no more questions?
All right, so.
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. So as for 10.2B, which is the student activity, when we were cutting checks for scholarships, it took a little bit of time for the money to get from the scholarship investment account to, to us here at Ram so that we can deposit the check. So you will note that that one account is overdrawn by $650. But today, it has been made whole and we are good in that account. And 10.2C, which is the food service, this would be the final report for food service in the month of June. And this would end our relationship with Chartwell's and tie everything off. There is an operating balance positive of $55,037.37. As you might remember, that during the COVID situation, because money was not coming in, we were paying expenditures out of the operating. And so we were able to recoup the deposits of the reimbursable meals that we were serving and brought our balance back up. So that's a positive note. So we ended on a good note. Granted, we did have to subsidize the food service program. And we're looking. And we're looking forward to a clean start for this fiscal year. Hopefully, COVID doesn't interrupt that too much. Are there any, I was going to say, are there any questions for last fiscal years?
Sorry. I'm just wondering, are we still doing food services right now over the summer for any families?
No, because we have the DOT project going on. We stopped, I believe it was June 16th, if I'm not mistaken. I don't remember the last date that we actually served, because we started the DOT project, and we knew there'd be too much congestion on premises. So, Hebron Elementary School took over serving some of our families, and I'm sure Marlboro Elementary took over feeding for some of them also.
How about on Wednesdays during the hybrid model, we serving foods?
So, one thing we are required to do, and we're still waiting for a state waiver to come through, but we're supposed to be able to make food available for all families. So, we're just waiting for the state waiver to come through, so that, yes, we can serve families. So, even during Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, if students choose to be distance learning, we also have to be able to provide them food. And I believe we're surveying families to see what families might partake in that situation.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So, moving on to this fiscal year, if that's okay. So, we started off with a bang, because, yes, as we all know, COVID is still here. So, July is a very busy time of year, closing out last fiscal year and opening up this fiscal year and getting ready for audit and trying to figure out the educational financial report that is due on Memorial Day or the day, the Tuesday after Memorial Day, because there's a 10,000, up to a $10,000 fine if I don't complete that. So, unfortunately, because there was no food service, student activity outside of the $650, there was really no activity in there also. I will not be reporting on that. It is a little too early for me to really delve into and do a net projection. But I have printed all the reports that I normally provide you. And as you can see, we are sitting pretty for right now. Given the state that we're in, we were hoping to get more money to help offset our, any staffing concerns we may need from, or for COVID-related situations. But I think the hybrid reopening model puts us in a much better position to be able to service our students and keep a better eye on the books and making sure that we don't run out of money sooner rather than later. So, hopefully, once we start going forward, we don't have any hiccups like Danbury seems to be having at the moment with spikes in their positive testing results. So, hopefully, we can keep going forward. And right now, I think everybody is mindful of the fact that we want to just spend what we have to spend. And then hopefully, by the end of September, we can see a better trend for everyone getting back to being healthy and all of us getting back to normal in some way, shape, or form. Are there any questions on this year's financials? All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, Eva, that concludes the financials.
It does, for my part, yes.
Okay. All right. So, we are on to 10.4, discussion of student parking fees for September, sorry, for first semester 2020-2021. Scott?
So, yeah, unfortunately, both of my new news item, new business items are COVID-related still. And I do look forward to the day when we don't even have to mention that name during one of our meetings. I'm going to share my screen with everybody. And specifically, we're going to talk a little bit about parking fees. So, once again, completely and utterly COVID-related. So, to, just to take a step back, at the end of last year, our last day of school was Friday, March 13th. And we were into the second semester, so that our students had already completed their parking payments. Either they paid $100 for the full year, or if they were new drivers, they paid $50 for the second semester. So, for Ram High School to park either on the senior lot, the junior lot, or in Betts Park, it costs $100 for the year and $50 for the semester. We went through the task of essentially simply counting out the days, and we provided refunds to all the students that had paid for parking based upon the number of days that they did not use parking for the rest of the year. So, now that we're beginning this year, and parking fees are once again coming due, we have received quite a few requests to kind of make some adjustments here. So, we actually, and I'm going to ask you to ignore that first number, we have 233 assigned spaces. So, if all of those spaces are taken, that would theoretically bring in revenue of $23,300. However, in any given year, we don't necessarily fill all of those spaces. We certainly don't fill them all for the entire year. We do have some students who qualify for a waiver of the fee based upon financial needs. So, the budgeted number that we actually shoot for is $21,910. That's the average for the last two years. Moving into this school year, we can theoretically assume that if all of our parking spaces were filled, we would have a, and we're charging $50 for the half-year, for the semester, we would have revenue of approximately $11,650. Now... The question we've been receiving from families and students is that since students will only be attending school two days out of the week, is the district going to consider reducing the first semester parking fees? So, what would the consequences of that be? Well, if we reduced the first semester parking fees, we would, our revenue would go from the $11,000 down to $5,825. This would, so, you know, what I would, if the board would entertain a proposal in this area, my recommendation would be to reduce the fee for the first semester only from $50 to $25. I would, I would, we would ask families to understand that this would be the one-time semester fee. Should we be hybrid for the first semester, it all works fine. If at some point during the first semester, we're back full return to school, we wouldn't charge them extra. But at the same time, if at some time during first semester, we go back out to virtual learning, we wouldn't go through the process of refunds. So, we would be charging half the fee with the expectation that there may be some benefit or cost, depending on how the school year progresses. Obviously, the benefits, it would reduce the need for refunds. We were able to do the refunds. That was quite a difficult task, just because of the numbers and balancing all of the payments versus what may still have been owed. It would eliminate the need for that. It would allow us to better manage our revenue, knowing exactly what we're pulling in, as opposed to assuming we're taking in revenue and then having to send it back out as refunds. And then, if things turn around for second semester, we, rather than, so, you know, rather than charging $100 for the year, we would simply do it by semester this year. And that would allow us, if we are back in school full-time, to charge the full $50 for the second semester. This would have the benefit for students of reducing what they're paying based upon their usage or their lower usage of parking. And for the district, though, it would result in the net loss of approximately $5,800.
Okay.
I'll open up for discussion.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
I do. Scott, do you think there's going to be more students driving this year also with not wanting to be on the bus?
Well, that's, you know, that, Jessica, that brings up a really interesting question that we've been discussing in a lot of similar types of discussions in that, you know, one of the things that the state has asked us to do is to, as much as we can, encourage students to drive, encourage students not to use the bus. So, I do believe, yes, the data that we're collecting from our surveys tells us that we will likely have more students driving to school. Having said that, we also are looking at 50 fewer juniors and seniors this year. So, we will be down the number of students paying for parking anyway. So, it's, we're in a, we're starting to transition, you know, to some lower numbers that will be offset by more students taking advantage of parking than probably would in a normal year.
Thank you.
Stephanie, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Scott's plan of proposed $25 for parking with no refunds and no increases should we go to full-time to be revisited for next semester.
Okay. Is there a second?
This is Jessica, a second.
Any discussion?
So, for, yeah, for discussion, Vinny, what is the, what is the last part mean of what you said?
Well, this is, as Scott had said, this is just for this semester. So, this plan is for this semester, and then next semester it would be, we'd have to revisit it again, because we'd be going back to the $50. And we don't know if we're going to be hybrid, if we're going to be full-time, what it's going to look like.
Okay. That's, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you for explaining.
Any other discussion?
Scott, what are your thoughts on just putting the whole paying for parking on hold while we do the hybrid? I mean, they're only going to be driving 40% of the time. I understand we're giving them 50% discount, but, I mean, Ava just said we had over $800,000 in surplus last year. You know, is it something, maybe we just suspend it until next semester? Give more kids incentive to drive, less on the bus.
So, Rob, the high school principal in me says, absolutely. I think that would be the fairest way to go. The superintendent in me tells me we may have some rocky times ahead. And if I can find a middle ground that I think is fair to all parties, I think I would suggest doing that. It's not a lot of money, either way. You know, quite frankly, if the board decided to do that, it's not a lot of money. It's not like, you know, $5,000 isn't going to make or break any budget year.
Scott, I think it makes sense what you're proposing, and like Vinny said, to be revisited. If we were only parking part of the time at our job, we would ask to only pay part of the time. And we do, I do like the idea of encouraging kids safely to drive to school as opposed to taking the bus for numerous reasons. But I think even with 50 less students, it does help reduce the capacity on those buses, especially if you're not providing a bus monitor. So, I thank you for bringing that up. I think it's a good thing.
Can I, can I ask a question? Kind of, I like the heart behind what Rob has said or suggested, because I know that a lot of students didn't work this summer who might otherwise have worked. Could we, going even more in middle ground, middle ground, could we be like very clear with parents, if it's even any hardship at all of, you know, your child didn't work this summer or something, to see someone? So that there isn't angst, you know, if a family's having some financial challenge?
And I think, Judy, I think that's a wonderful sentiment. And I, you know, I think we do, even on a good year, we try our best to get that message out there.
Yeah.
It's not at all uncommon. Every year, we have conversation with kids that we recognize that even $50 is a real hardship. So, you know, that would continue. We can certainly make sure that we extend that invitation to everybody that, you know, should you be experiencing any hardships, remind everybody that we're open to. And I think you'll see, and we collect the full amount, quite frankly, because we do work so closely with our kids.
Scott, maybe, you're always so great with wording and gracious. Maybe just one simple line that said something about due to the extraordinary times, and if your child was unable to work in the summer or something, you know, just to leave that, so families don't feel awkward.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any, is there any other discussion or questions? Are we ready to move on a vote? Okay. Sue?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so motion passes unanimously. Okay. We are on to 10.5, discussion of scheduled overnight overseas trips.
So, once again, COVID is going to be the reason for my next presentation. So, I'm going to share my screen again. So, one of the strengths of the middle and the high school is the fact that we're able to offer our students so many unique experiences beyond the four walls of the middle school and the high school. And for years and years and years, Ram has been offering really a unique array of trips available to students. And last year was no different in terms of offering trips. So, right now, we have three overnight trips that currently scheduled. The Washington DC trip, which historically has only been scheduled for eighth graders. It was scheduled for last year in May. The reason why I have eight and nine there is that we worked out an arrangement for the eighth graders from last year. If they chose, rather than to get a refund, if they wanted to experience the trip, we would allow them to go as freshmen. So, we currently, and my next slide will give you some numbers there. But we currently do have some of our incoming freshmen scheduled for that trip. There has been no new schedule for eighth graders. So, our current incoming eighth graders, no one has had an opportunity to register for this trip.
Scott, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't know if you're sharing your screen yet. I don't see the slides. That's okay. Nope.
Okay. Let me go back and hit it again. Can you see it? Yeah?
No. No, it's coming. It's coming.
Okay, great. Sorry about that.
No, thank you.
Thank you for letting me down. Okay. How's that? Did you all see that by the scheduled trips?
Yep. Now we see everything. Great, great.
So, we have the Washington DC trip scheduled for May. And again, it currently has no eighth graders scheduled. It does have some of our current ninth graders. We have a trip scheduled in April to the Galapagos Islands. That includes sophomores through seniors. And we have a trip to Italy in April that involves students in grade 10 to 11. For Washington DC, we have 65 of our current ninth grade students who had registered as eighth graders, but because the trip got canceled, they expressed interest in going again this year. And obviously, the reason why we're having this conversation tonight is I think that we all have to recognize that it's not unlikely that these trips will not happen this year. Would it be because we simply aren't ready to send our students to these areas? Or, in the case of the Galapagos and Italy, we may still be in a situation where travelers from the United States may be permitted to live in those areas. Where the Washington DC trip stands right now is that families have until October 1st of this year for us to cancel that trip and still receive a full refund minus $145 that they paid in trip insurance. For the Galapagos, we have seven students who are scheduled to travel. Two plan to cancel at this time. Of the five remaining students that would be still scheduled to go, two of them are seniors. So should we not be able to travel to the Galapagos in the spring? Postponing the trip becomes much more complicated in that we would have Graham graduates who are scheduled to be on the trip as opposed to around students. If we cancel now, we have a, we have a couple of months. We're still in that similar timeframe as the Washington DC trip. They would receive their full refund minus two hundred dollars trip insurance for that. We currently have three students scheduled to travel to Italy in April as well. Of those three students, one student purchased trip insurance and would receive the full refund minus two hundred and twenty-five dollar trip insurance. And the other two students do not have trip insurance, so they would receive a seven-five percent refund. Each of those students has approximately four thousand dollars, so those students would take a hit on that one. They would, it would cost them about a thousand dollars if we cancel the trip. So some of the things to consider. Obviously, students have really been looking forward to these trips. In particular, the Galapagos Island trip. This is a trip that our chaperones announced four years ago, and students, as middle school students, it shared with them. And a number of those students have been making monthly payments for the last few years in an effort to save up the money necessary for that trip. Having said that, planning in the age of COVID presents so many significant challenges, and this is one of them. You know, having a trip that if we decide to wait and postpone any decision, it puts the vast majority of our families at a real disadvantage in terms of loss of of any type of refund as we get closer to the trip. As we approach the travel dates, they'll receive smaller refunds. Postponing the trips, which we have done, we have done in the past, postponed like the Washington DC trip to the next year. Trips particularly like our Italy trip and our Galapagos trip present really significant challenges in terms of postponing. One, there's no guarantee that we will be able to travel even in the spring of next year. But for those teachers, chaperones, and students who are currently planning and going this spring, you know, our our adults who are running those trips may not be available to run the trip a year in spring, and the same maybe two before it signs up.
Scott, can I interrupt you for a second? Judy, is there any way you can mute that phone?
I I I am texting Vinny about that. I don't know, Stephanie. It's been hanging up when I do that. He just told me to do star six, and I'm trying.
Okay, thanks.
Judy, when I, when I muted you, did it hang you up?
It 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 did not hang me up, but then I couldn't unmute.
Okay.
But I, but you know, um, the issue is my computer is dead. I'm on my phone. I've been on the computer all day. And I'm on Google Meets too, so I'm just on the phone part. I'm trying to look how to do this.
Okay. That can, that can mute your, if you want.
No, that, yeah, sure, if you can figure out how to unmute me, Scott, because I don't usually go on this way. I'm not unusually on Google Meet on the phone. So sure, if you can unmute me, definitely. Thank you.
Um, one more thing, Scott. Joe just got home, and he's trying to get into the meeting. Can you let him in?
I think I need to stop presenting to do that. So I should see his request come up. Okay, is Joe, can someone text Joe and ask Joe to try to log in?
Okay.
Is Joe with us, or is?
He's waiting, he said he's waiting to get in. Let me see if he's in the right meeting.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't see a request to, anyone requesting entry to the meeting.
He might be in the executive session link.
Yeah, I just asked him if he was in the public or the executive, so hopefully he'll
So, well, I won't, I won't put my screen back up looking for Joe to come back in, but so I think you can see the challenge that we are are facing right now. Last year, we postponed the Washington trip. Well, we didn't really postpone it. We postponed it for for last year's eighth graders, giving them an opportunity to attend this year. But it's, at that time, we all envisioned that come spring 2021, travel would be once again back to normal. Our concern is that if travel is, remains a challenge that either the district at some point is going to say it's not safe to send kids, we don't feel comfortable doing it, or the countries, you know, may not let us in at all. The problem is, you know, if if the travel company, if 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 our State Department says you cannot go to Italy, or you cannot go to the Galapagos, it does create a different situation. Unfortunately, if we wait for that to happen, the amount of refund goes down and down and down as we get closer and closer to the trip. So, you know, my own personal recommendation would be to cancel all overseas trips at this point, or all overnight trips at this point. You know, I think all of those families that have purchased trip insurance are going to be out the the cost of the trip insurance. They'll get all the other, the other refunds. There are two students in the going to Italy that would would have most to lose. They they would lose almost a thousand dollars by canceling. But again, having said that, they may lose a thousand now, but they may lose much more as we approach April, and if we made this decision later on. You know, the other issue with having, you know, in the age of COVID, you have small groups. What that means is that the travel company will be partnering us up with other school groups. And so there's no guarantee that they won't be partnering us with a school group from a state that doesn't have the numbers that Connecticut does. And, you know, we could be looking at challenges there. Even if the location or the destination isn't a problem, the people that are traveling was with us could pose a problem as well. Now, this is not a recommendation I make lightly, or one that I feel great about, but I I do think that, all things considered, it's probably at this point in time, the most generous decision to make.
Yeah, I I understand that this is a, this is a really tough thing, and, but ultimately, we want to look out for, you know, financially for the parents and and kids and safety wise, and just the uncertainty of this year is just overwhelming. So I, my opinion is it would be a good move to to cancel overnight and overseas trips this year, as much a disappointment as it is.
Scott, was the, I just had a question. This is Vin. Was the, were the dates the same for all three trips in terms of when you had to notify them by? I mean, are those dates coming up soon, or?
They're, they're coming up soon. I think the, for the Washington DC trip, it's October first. For the, I'm pretty sure it's the Italy trip, you have a hundred and fifty days before the trip actually leaves. So we're getting there, you know, we're, if it's not October first, it's it's sometime during the month of October, early November that these decisions have to be made.
And and at this point, is anything open in DC for the kids to go to?
I can't imagine. If you were going to travel in the fall, no, I I don't, I not, I don't know, but I don't. Let me put this way, if we were traveling in the fall, I don't think we'd have any question that we can't go any of these places. Italy, now, we, we, an American can't even get into it, Italy, at this point.
Yeah. That's what I, that's what my next question was going to be to Joe, our resident aviation expert. What, you know, what are you seeing out there in terms of the airports and and, you know, traveling abroad? You know, I mean, is is anything, you know, going to open up soon, or?
Unmute yourself, Joe.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Stephanie. I don't see it happening anytime soon, Vinny. We're not traveling internationally at all. I get daily updates, it changes, but I think Scott alluded to the fact that, you know, Italy is off limits. I mean, all Europe travel is off limits to Americans right now.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions for Scott?
I just had one quick question. Scott, has there been discussion with the families that have paid already? I'm guessing they must be aware that this is something that's
Yes.
An open question. Okay.
And and having said that, you know, some of the families, you know, if possible, would love to hang in there and and go. So it's, I don't want to paint the picture that everybody is of the same mind. You know, there's some that would like to hang in there if at all possible.
Looks like Steph.
Scott, did I see you wanted to make a motion?
Uh, yes, ma'am. If we're done with the discussion, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education cancel scheduled overnight and overseas trips due to current and likely future future
Rob will second.
Any discussion?
Are they, are, this is Kathleen, trips from the same company?
They are actually, Kathleen. These, all three of these trips are through World Strides, which is kind of the 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 standard company that just about every school uses. And you may remember earlier this summer, I shared with you that World Strides had filed for eleven bankruptcy, which which is just another reason why we might want to get our money out as quickly as possible.
I agree.
Yeah, there, I mean, their their communication with us is, you know, obviously, as any company is going to, is going to put a kind of a bright picture on it, and that, you know, it's a restructuring so that they continue, they can continue to remain in business. If if everybody pulls their money out, then eventually there won't be so much money left. Fortunately, the trip insurance, you know, makes it for the vast majority of our kids. It eliminates that as an issue.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Sue?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Vin?
Um, yes.
I know Judy was having problems. We'll come back to you, Judy. Kathleen?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Judy, did you get back on? Scott, are you able to unmute Judy?
I am not.
No.
Okay, we're going to go with what we have. It's a unanimous yes.
Yeah.
Judy, actually, if you, if, oh, she can't comment because she's not on a computer. Judy, if you want to text somebody?
Stephanie, she said she was going to try to log off and then come back on, that she didn't, she didn't, she didn't say what she was going to vote, or how she was going to vote, so.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to change the outcome.
No, I don't think it's, it won't change the outcome. So motion passes. Okay, next is the reports of the subcommittees. None of the subcommittees have met with, actually, DOT. Scott, did you meet with DOT recently?
No, the the last meeting we had with DOT was the tour of the site.
I keep freezing. Now I'm having technical difficulties. Can you guys hear me?
We can, yes.
Yeah, okay. I keep, I keep, I keep freezing, so I'm not sure what's going on over here, but, um, okay, so we're about to start up our subcommittee meetings again in September, so, but at this point, we have, we have nothing unless there's something from East Con or Cave. I don't know if Judy got back on. I don't even know if you can hear me because I froze again.
Yeah, we can. Yep.
Okay. All right. So because we are not rolling with those meetings, we were going to move on to public comments. Are there any public comments? I don't know.
Stephanie, now we can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm frozen again.
Okay.
Um, informational items. Scott, do you have any other informational items for us?
We do not, no.
Okay. Next, we will be going into executive session. I believe, Scott, you're going to join us for executive session, correct?
Yes.
Are there any other administrators that are going to join us in executive session?
No.
No, okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go to executive section and invite Scott Leslie to join us.
Okay.
I'll second. Vin?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Time is seven forty. Everyone's going to log out of the public session and go into the executive session link.